On Monday, November 25th, 2019, if you'd all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this is a first. We don't normally meet on Thanksgiving week, but we are doing it this year. So, happy Thanksgiving to everybody out there. Happy Thanksgiving week. Okay, we'll start off with a public comment. If you come up with a public comment, please make sure you sign the sign-in sheet and then make your public comment. Anybody today with a public comment?
And happy Thanksgiving to all of you as well. Ellen Moja, 137 Carrick Drive. Trustees of Osgood Hill as well. Just want to say thank you for the appointments that are being made tonight. I know there's a couple more spots and eagerly and excited to see those take place. I therefore, as a trustee, do ask that the post-public meetings that was handed out prior, and I'll hand out another one in case someone's late, those who posted, because our next meeting is coming up after Thanksgiving. As well as excited to announce that not only is holidays showing lots of support from local vendors and clubs and boards from around town, we have a full house of several of our neighbors and friends joining us. We're expecting at least 4,000 plus, if we were at 37 plus last year, so we will keep track of those numbers. We will also have the Friends of the Stevens Estate with us, and they will be accepting donations as well as membership. The vendor evening tonight was for local vendors to participate in the excitement and the support, and we are ready to go. Decorating has begun. We're there on a daily basis, supporting Joanna in all of her efforts in supplying the house, and it will look beautiful once again. We have the Santa's Village, and we are celebrating all holidays during the month of December with coloring books supported by some of our banks, so that everyone has something to celebrate as well. We welcome all of you to join us. We welcome, and we look forward to seeing you all. Thank you.
Anyone else with a public comment?
I'll leave the pen.
Going once, going twice. Okay, public comment is done. We had a meeting on November 12th, and we have the minutes in front of you. Your motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Government reports. Update on Columbia Gas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just a quick update on our Columbia Gas progress here. As of last week, all the compliance checks have been completed. For the Group Three, which if you remember correctly, that was the last group that was done, and was the meters that were outside. So, it was 389 inspections. 377 required no remediation, and 11 required remediation, so those meters were replaced. Chief McCarthy met with the Quality Review Board that was created by Columbia Gas last week. This is our first meeting with them. We should be seeing more of them in town in future months. That group, which is a group that was created by Columbia Gas and is different than the third-party audit, is being led by Ray LaHood, and he was the Transportation Secretary under President Obama. They are continuing to do leak surveys in our neighborhoods, so they're doing handheld leak detection. But they also have a new vehicle, which I'll try to get a picture of and get online, that's going to be going out at night and conducting leak surveys. It's 1,000 times more sensitive than the handheld option, so it should help us progress along with that. But we should be still seeing them in neighborhoods, and people should still be expecting to have Columbia Gas vehicles around, because they're still working on the high-pressure line. So, if you remember correctly, when the pressure line had an issue in Lawrence back in September, they depressurized that line, and they're slowly bringing it back up to regular pressure. And so, it needs to get to 90 PSI. They've increased the pressure to 65 PSI. So, they're doing it slowly because they're looking for leaks. They want to make sure they don't bring the pressure up and cause any issues. 65 PSI is good, because it covers temperatures to negative 1 degrees. So, basically, the fear is, if the line is too depressurized, and it gets very, very cold, we won't be able to have enough heat for demand. Right? So, I'm much more comfortable with it at 65 than I was when it was down much further than that. And we're happy that they're pressurizing the line slowly and looking for the leaks using the new truck. So, that's progress on that end.
Yeah, I think it's important to make sure you get the information. People get very sensitive when they see those trucks around town, and they need to know. It's just preventative. It's just, you know, a truck out there looking in case there's anything.
Right, so we'll try to get a picture of that truck tomorrow, we'll do the best we can, and get that out so people will know what it looks like, since it is new, and I think it probably would look different from what we're used to.
Is it feasible?
So, I encountered this a couple times, more than a couple times, the past two weeks, where somebody in a non-impacted area sees a Columbia Gas truck on their street and is working. Is there a way that we can have, just in an acknowledgement from Columbia Gas that this type of PTSD exists as a community? Is there a way that we can have some type of project portal almost, where residents could check to see? Or are these projects just not happening that long?
If you're seeing a Columbia, so if you're seeing a Columbia Gas truck on a street that's not in the impacted area, it's due to a leak, most likely. And so, because their leak detection, right, and the pressurized line is over 130 miles long, right? So, it's not just in the impacted area, it's all over. And so, if you're seeing a truck that's outside of the impacted area doing emergency work, it's because they're fixing leaks. So, it would be difficult for, they fix, they try to fix, depending on the tier of the leak, as quickly as possible. I think it would be difficult for them to stop and insert it in the project portal. If you see us with them, they have to call if it's a grade-one leak. So, if you see us with them, you know it's the most kind of dangerous leak of all. Other than that, they're handling them on a case-by-case basis. I can ask them about a project portal. I can ask. It doesn't hurt for us to request. We're no longer doing the weekly meetings, because the compliance checks are done. But I'm working with them to try to still have increased communication, because there is still a lot happening. So, we can see what we can come up with to try to alleviate some of those fears. But I think the most important thing people should know is that the leaks, if there's any leaks, and they can just be small leaks, right? But as they're pressurizing that line, they're trying to repair all of them, which is a good thing for us. But they will be seen oftentimes outside of the impacted area, because the coverage area is so big. But we'll continue to try to get that message out, and I think that's important. And I continue to say to Columbia Gas, and I know Laurie has as well, that there is fear in the community, and they need to recognize that. And so, I think that that's an important message for us to continue to tell them.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, while we're on governmental reports, if you don't mind me moving on, just one more thing?
Sure.
Sure. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the shop local totals. We're still working through it, but thanks to Laurie inverted at Gillian and Jean, who really worked all last week and Laurie all weekend. We can say that at this point, we have approximately 1,355 people who have turned in receipts. We still have 50 that are pending in the system, so that may increase a little bit. And right now, the total entries is $242,275. That's much we're paying back to residents, so it's very exciting. As we move forward, we'll try to do a further analysis of what was spent, right, because we'll be able to pull that up as well. So, we can tell you how much was spent in the impacted businesses, which is really the most exciting part. But we just wanted to give you a quick update on that.
But so far, you're paying back $242,000?
Yes.
So, that means at least almost $500,000.
Yes, at least, right. I think we said the average person spent 100, well, the average person was getting back $175. So, it really was very impactful. I think the businesses are really happy. I was getting reports of a lot of lines, which is really great. So, we're excited about that.
Yeah, I mean, putting $500,000 into this local economy, into North End of's economy, in those businesses, is very good.
It's amazing. So, thanks to Laurie, who really spearheaded, and Jean, they really, I tortured Laurie this weekend, so that's why she looks tired.
Christine Becklinde and I, she developed the form, the online form, did a great job.
Yeah, and if you were chatting with someone, yeah.
Yeah, we were chatting and helped with any issues that occasionally arose with the website.
She was on the help desk all week long.
It only took me three tries, but I got it done. How long?
We had lots of people coming in to go through the process. So, we got to meet lots of new residents too, which was fun, so.
Well, thank you for that. That was amazing. That was amazing. Okay, we'll move. Anything else?
No, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, let's move to consent items. We have a number of consent items tonight, a lot of newly good ones. So, the first one, we'll accept a donation from the Penn Tuckett Bank in the amount of $7,500 for the Fourth of July fireworks. Anybody here to speak to that? Oh, huge check. Oh, well, thank you. Okay, great.
Marion, I do this to her all the time.
Do we want to vote to accept it, and then we'll take a picture after?
Yep.
Yeah, that would be great. Say your title, Marion, as well. You should say what your title is. Okay, you need to talk into the thing. She's the, of the North End of a Branch.
Marion from Penn Tuckett Bank was, Penn Tuckett Bank has been one of our main sponsors for a number of years, and they have been very generous every year to give us a $7,500 donation towards our firework display. Helps out tremendously. Our base cost for our fireworks is about $10,000 a year. And without their help, we'd be over there just looking at a blank sky every Fourth of July. So, it's just great help to the community. It's really appreciated.
And I'd like to say, for sort of a medium-sized bank, that's a lot of money, and they donate all over the region, you know.
Quite involved in all the communities that serve.
You do, so that was really very generous of the Penn Tuckett Bank. And for those who don't know, it is in the Butch Boy Plaza, because you're still kind of new, but.
Five years is, well, a little bit more than new.
Yeah, and because of your bank's contribution, we have one of the best fireworks in the area.
We do. We're very fortunate. We're fortunate that the Vice Chairman, Vice President of the company, Matt Shea, is a North Andover resident, former North Andover resident. And he looks kindly upon us, so to speak, that he's very generous with the display that they give us for the amount of money that we spent. So, we're fortunate in that regard. So, I have to have kudos to Atlas Fireworks as well, Atlas Fire Technics.
Okay, so can we get a motion then?
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen accept the donation from Penn Tuckett Bank in the amount of $7,500 for fireworks.
I second that.
Any discussion?
We'd like to also send a letter of thank you to Penn Tuckett Bank. Although, we're thanking you in person tonight, we'd also like to make sure that that letter gets on record as well.
Can I say something else too? I'm going to be decorating the Santa's tent this Sunday.
Are you speaking to the microphone?
Okay.
I'll be decorating the Santa's tent for the tree lighting this Sunday over at the Common, so.
So, you drew the short straw?
We haven't approved yet.
Oh, oh, sorry.
You can still be out, you can still decorate whatever you want.
You didn't do anything wrong. You got the message out more than once.
So, we have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get a picture, if it's possible?
Yeah, will we go?
Yeah, in front of the seal, the town seal. There, in front of the town seal.
So, you stand in front of. Okay.
Well, then we'll all be in the picture.
As you can see, it's starting with like.
It gets strong.
Because Melissa will take you, come in the picture. You're on the festival.
Are we all in it now?
We're good.
Good.
Looking forward to that.
Yeah, what you know, that's very nice.
Again, you could boomerang her holding the check in front of the town seal. I bet Penn Tuckett would share that.
Mr. Coco, are you going to speak to the festival for the Santa Parade? Since I do not see Ms. Ashley here tonight, so I'm assuming you're the one that's going to be doing this?
She's very busy tonight, as we all are, if you can imagine, trying to get all the divisions squared away, so. But yeah, speaking on behalf of E.J. Folds, Lieutenant E.J. Folds, who is away at the Academy, and Ashley Valencourt has gallantly stepped up to the plate to try and coordinate the effort. We're all helping her out with that and doing an excellent job. So, we're asking for permission to hold the Santa Parade on December 30th. I mean, this is, this, thank you, November 30th. Wish it was December 30th.
Come on.
Need time, need time.
I will move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of the Festival Committee to hold the annual Santa Parade on Saturday, November 30th, as presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Much love, tradition.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll, and did you, I'm sorry, I was distracted for a minute. Did you give the time and the route and everything?
The time, the time is going to be 12:00 noon. The route is going to be starting on Main Street from the middle school, proceeding down Main Street, turning down Elm Street, then down to Water Street, taking a left onto Water Street, coming out, back out at the Armenian Church, back onto Massachusetts Avenue, Massachusetts Avenue.
Main Street.
You can tell I'm punchy. Back onto Main Street and concluding down at Sutton Street.
And what time do people assemble who are participating?
People who are participating in the parade, we're asking them to be at the middle school or there in particular. We have five different staging areas, which is the middle school on the front side, the backside, and the 125 side, and also at the Kittred School, which will be the Antique House, et cetera, and in front of the superintendent's office on Main Street as well. That will be our fifth division.
And what time?
And 1:00 is the, excuse me, 12:00 is the kickoff, but from 10:00 a.m. on, hopefully be there by 11:00 a.m. and no later, if you're participating, and obviously start gathering on Main Street close to 12:00. And we just ask people, please not to step into the street, to leave the streets open as much as possible for safety purposes, because we will have vehicles going up and down the street. Please stay on the sides of the road. We're asking anybody who's giving out candy to hand out the candy and not throw it, because many times, short reaches, they end up in the middle of the street, and kids run out, and they're always constantly kicking candy to the sides of the road. So, we ask that you hand candy to the kids if at all possible, if you're going to be doing that. And hopefully, we're going to enjoy it and have a good time. We will be stopping in front of Town Hall, because a lot of the divisions will be voted on, floats will be voted on, most entertaining for a second and third, and everybody will get a participation ribbon for being in the parade.
And is this a sun, snow, rain, whatever event?
Yes, oh, boy. We almost ran into that, because Haverhill had theirs yesterday, and you know what they were up against. And their alternate date was our parade date.
Okay.
And fortunately, they held theirs with the weather being, and ours will be as well. And the reason why is because a lot of the participants have other obligations. If we're going to bump it a week, we can't guarantee that the bands, et cetera, will be able to be there for us, so.
Okay.
It's a rain or shine event.
All right, thank you.
How many, how many paid employees does the parade have?
How many, how many people, how many bands do we pay for?
How many paid employees run that parade?
Oh, geez, let me think, Phil. I think it's zero.
I think it's zero. I think that's a good reminder for the community. That is put on 100% by the volunteer members of the Festival Committee.
Absolutely. In all the events that the Festival Committee puts on in our community, it's all volunteer, all the way around.
Thank you for doing that.
My pleasure.
And you might as well stay at the podium.
I think I got to stay right here.
Yeah, you're going to stay there for a little bit of time.
I put in for you, yeah.
So, the next one, we have a request from the Festival Committee.
Yes.
To use the Town Common for the annual tree lighting celebration on December 1st, 2019, from 4:00 to 6:00.
Correct. We'll actually be setting up the air park at 1:00 in the afternoon. We're going to have our annual tree lighting festival that we resurrected about four or five years ago now. It was a longstanding tradition in our community, and we brought it back. It's a great event. The Whibbids Club have been gracious enough to donate the money for our purchase of lights for the tree. Every year, unfortunately, we have to replace the lights, because the squirrels find them delicious, because of the soy insulation on them now. So, they don't last more than a season.
You have to explain that, because people won't understand, like, they want to keep, you have to explain why, because it is counterintuitive.
To be green and Green Initiative, they now make the insulation and the sockets on all of the outdoor lights out of a soy-based product versus a petroleum-based plastic, because it's environmentally friendly, and it can biodegrade, et cetera, et cetera. Squirrels find them delicious. So, every year when we put them on the tree, they eat away at them, and we go out there with a DPW, and all of the plugs are chewed off, and the insulation's off the wires, so it's an annual thing now that we have to replace them.
So, at the, at the risk of sounding, anyway, one thing that you might want to try is actually Irish Spring.
Really?
Yep. It is amazing. Yes, Irish Spring soap is a natural.
Do we have to set up little showers for the squirrel hound?
Yeah, I know, I know. But it actually does, it's actually a fairly good repellent for mammals.
How do you do this?
Because.
Put some liquid soap on it or?
You came up with that awfully quick rest. I'm just not sure I want to know.
You can either hang it, drill a hole, hang it, or you rub it on.
So, we can make ornaments and hang it on the tree.
And put red bows on the top. It's green.
It'll smell great.
It's interesting.
It will smell great.
This year, we actually approached a professional lighting company to come out and give us some estimates, which were relatively exorbitant compared to what we do ourselves. But they said that they have some squirrel abatement systems that they put around the trees. They didn't specify what it is. Probably Irish Spring for all we know.
Works.
But anyway, we're going to be having our traditional tree lighting ceremony on the Common, starting at 4:00. We're going to have live music there. The high school choir and choral group will be there as well. The Royal School of Music will be performing. We'll be giving out free hot chocolate and cookies. And also, we're going to be having hot dogs donated as well, so. It'll be fun. Santa Claus will be there. Everyone bring their camera, and they can have their picture taken, and as you heard, Penn Tuckett Bank mentioned that they are going to be decorating Santa's tent this year. So, it should be relatively nice, and a lot of you have been out there, and I think you'll enjoy it, Thomas.
I will move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of the Festival Committee to use the Town Common for the annual tree lighting celebration on December 1st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Who do you say is lighting the tree?
This year, Grand Marshal, who will be the Grand Marshal for the parade and also lighting the tree, is Skip Trombley.
Right.
Yeah, does a lot for the town.
He certainly does.
And it's our way of thanking him, paying back a little.
And his trucks are always in the town, in the parade, helping out with the bands, with the banners.
Does a lot. They do a lot for the community and do it very quietly.
And for decades.
They have. So.
Okay, so Jeff, I guess we're going to have you stay up there one more time. I'm going to take a couple things out of order. I'd like to get through items E and F, which are both donations from the Women's, North End of a Women's Club. So, the first one is to accept the donation from the North End of a Women's Club for lanterns for the Stevens Estate, estimated value of $750. Maybe you can step back for this one. I think you're more involved in the next one.
I'm familiar with it, but I'll let the Women's Club speak to it.
Well, I, I'm.
Joan, are you going to do it?
I'm, I'm here with our treasurer, Joan Tetler, who also ran the fashion show. And from the proceeds from our fundraisers, we do try to give donations of various types to the community, whether it be scholarships or go-bags for people who need to leave their home in a hurry. We give money to veterans. We give money to the schools, give whatever, wherever there is a need. Our organization, all we do is raise money and give it away to worthy causes, and this year, we chose two. The driveway going up to the Stevens Estate. and this year we chose two. Um, the driveway going up to the Stevens Estate sometimes can be a little bit dark, so we did, uh, purchase, and they hang on hooks, these really pretty red lanterns. So you'll probably see them about the estate for holidays, I would imagine, as well. So we donated the money for that, and then, uh, hearing that we were going to need lights again, and the, the tree lighting was originally, or the new originally, um, the money was donated by the Women's Club several years ago, and we are, um, and then donating, um, what is it, seven hundred and fifty dollars or, no, six hundred, seven hundred dollars for the lights, and I've got to look at my notes.
Seven hundred and fifty for the lights and six hundred and sixty-three.
Yes.
I'm sorry, seven fifty for the lanterns and six hundred and sixty-three for the lights.
And again, this is all from our fundraising and the support of the community, and, uh, and, um, so we're very happy to do it. Um, again, Joan Tetler was the chair of the fashion show, a lot of work, and, uh, we thank her and her committee and the other committees for raising, helped raise this money, so. And Jeff assisted us in figuring out what types of lights would be best, where we would get the biggest bang for our buck, and, uh, and we're very grateful for Jeff in assisting us to determine what those lights should in need be, and we, um, and we've given the money for him, uh, because he put it up front.
Also grateful to the Women's Club for the donation to make it happen. Really appreciate it.
Well, you're so very welcome. We hope everybody will enjoy it, and we'd like everyone to donate bars of Irish Spring soap, so we don't have to do this every, and you can put a little red bow on it if you want. No, I'm kidding, but it is kind of funny. Thank you, Jeff, as always.
Thank you for all of the above.
And thank you, Joan.
So we have two donations. Um, why don't we take them separately? The first is a donation for seven hundred and fifty dollars from the North End of a Women's Club for lanterns for the Stevens Estate.
So move.
Do we have a motion? A second?
Second.
Second. Okay, and again, with a, a sincere thank you to the Women's Club for this donation. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain, just.
Okay, understood. And then the second one is to accept the donation from the North End of a Women's Club for lights on the Town Common valued at six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
A motion to accept the donation in the amount of six hundred and sixty-three dollars from the North End of a Women's Club.
Second.
Okay, and again, we would like to sort of, uh, thank you, and we'll follow up with a, a thank you letter as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
So four O and one abstention for both of those. Okay, well, thank you. Um, so let's jump back. The, uh, we skipped item D, which is to authorize the town manager to sign the Green Community's annual report.
The annual reporters do it at the end of December typically, um, and we're just looking for authority to have me sign it when it's completed.
I guess you'll share that with us as a.
Yeah, we'll send you the final as well.
I remember looking at it at one point. We were looking at some data for something. I can't remember what now, but I'd be interested to see how we're doing on that.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, um.
Move that the Board of Selectmen authorize town manager Melissa Murphy-Revie is to sign the Green Community's annual report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, I'm just going to remind the folks in the audience that we're still in a meeting here, and, um, if you would like to have conversations, you can take them outside. Right, it's somewhat distracting to have side conversations going on. Um, okay, the next is to vote on assignments for FY twenty-one goals. So at our last meeting, uh, we talked about each of the goals that we have, uh, set for fiscal year twenty-one, and we took, um, ownership. We, we distributed ownership among the board, um, so you should now have in your package the list of those items that you signed up for, and then we just want to vote to approve those assignments.
The only change that I, um, I think that they got, they put me where you did, it's, uh, mentor police and fire chiefs provide training and equipment, although I certainly do support any training and equipment that any of the staff members, I think that was your goal, to tell you.
That is my goal, but I specifically did not want to do that.
Oh, what? What, I'm confused.
Well, no, it wasn't one of the goals that I, I had said, uh, in my list of all, but it was, um, I didn't.
Oh, to be the board member lead? Okay, is that what it is? I'll, I'll be.
You're going to stay with that?
Yeah, I'll stay with that. I thought, okay. I just didn't want to take your thunder away.
Okay, so, um, any further comments?
I just, I'm glad we're doing this. I think this is a great idea. Thank you for, uh, prompting this, and I think it just helps with transparency and communication.
No, I agree.
I think you've been switching that.
That said, kind of interesting, because we're talking about assignments here, uh, but, uh, I will move that the Board of Selectmen approve the FY twenty-one goal assignments as presented as we are sitting.
Okay, motion, do we have a second? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and, um, we're going to vote on, the next thing, we also, um, had a new program where we assign liaisons from this board for each one of the, um, some, for most of the boards and committees in town. Um, so we went through and we took a look at each one of the boards and committees, and we each, uh, expressed our interest in being that liaison, um, not meaning that the liaison has to sit through every meeting or go to every meeting, but just to have a point of contact for that committee or board into the, uh, into the Board of Selectmen. Um, so when we were doing it last week, we, uh, two weeks ago, sorry, we didn't really have, um, a feel for everything that we all signed up for, so now you should have in front of you a list of everything that you expressed an interest in being the liaison for. Um, so tonight we'll vote to ratify that list unless there are any changes or, um, or any changes that we need to make.
I think you and I are going to be busy, Dick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all right.
I mean, I saw that as well, and I was going to ask you if you want to offload some of those feel free, although I want to preface, we are also not saying we're going to go to all these meetings, right? I mean, I don't have bandwidth to go to all these meetings anyway, so it's more.
It's fine.
Being a liaison and, but anyway, I'm happy to take one off your plates if you want to make it more equitable.
Um, I think I'm good right now.
Yeah, we'll let, yeah, we'll let you know if it starts to become overwhelming.
Right, we can always.
Yeah, could do stuff, or just fill in.
Right, we're just deciding to do this so we can change as we want.
I mean, emergency management could be a problem for me, but we'll deal with that as we go along. All right, so, um, so we'll have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the liaison assignments as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that list is ratified as well. Okay, so we also, last, um, meeting, we talked about um, how we were going to notify and manage snow emergencies, so I will look to the town manager to give us an update on that.
Do you remember at the last meeting, I suggested that we try a new program, call it a pilot for the share and see if it works. We could always come back to you if we think it's not working. Um, but the way that we have framed this right now is that on or after December first, the police chief, working with the PW director, could declare a snow emergency, and during that snow emergency time, no person would be able to park or permit any vehicle to remain unattended on any street or way in the town of North Andover, except as, it was exceptions that were out, um, in your past years. So none of the exceptions have changed at all. It's the exact same exceptions that you've had in the past, um, and what we're saying basically is that you'd still have the twenty-five dollar fine in place that you had in the past. Um, we, um, still will not allow snow or ice to be deposited upon any portion of a way open to public travel. Our declared snow emergency information will be shared via social media, town website, North Andover TV, and reverse nine-one-one. We would deem a snow emergency declared on any day in which school is canceled, so it would be a good way for people to just realize in advance that if there is no school, that's a day when there is going to be a snow emergency. Um, this will end on March fifteenth, twenty twenty, unless we need to revisit it in advance, or we have a terrible winter and we need to revisit it, but fingers crossed that that doesn't happen. Um, and so we'd like to give this a whirl. We're looking at the blue lights, like we suggested, um, we're thinking about trying to put one out in front of Town Hall. Um, and so basically those would stroll when there is a snow emergency in place, so, um, DBW is looking into that now. Um, if this gets approved tonight, we'll do a big press burst, um, probably tomorrow and Wednesday, because December first is very soon, and we want people to know about the program. Um, but we think this would work well, um, and it's something we'd like to, to try.
Okay, great. Um, so we need to vote to ratify this as well?
Yes, please.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen accept the new, the snow emergency regulation as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next, we have two appointments tonight for the Stevens Estate Advisory Committee. Um, I'm going to turn it over to the, uh, sub, sub appointment, the committee, the sub appointment committee.
Yeah, so we've, uh, been meeting with folks, and we've, we're happy to have two appointments tonight, um, and we're working on getting those other two slots filled. I think there are a number of people who were interested in the long term, who, um, are, uh, considering applying for the, uh, standing committee, so we're just waiting for that to come together, but at least with these two appointments now, there'll be a quorum, and, um, that really puts, um, this committee back in, in gear, uh, and we've had two really, uh, excellent folks, uh, to recommend to the board, uh, Robin Ellington and Jerome Justin. Their depth of, uh, experience, um, in marketing, in, um, business and operations, really outstanding, and so I think they bring a very good professional eye to, uh, what needs to be, uh, managed today and kind of ongoing, so we feel really, really good about having these people. It's great to have folks step up with this kind of expertise.
Um, so are you saying that, um, the people who are interested can still apply? Is that what you just said a few moments ago?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, we've, we've still have two more slots to fill.
We've interviewed a third individual who, actually is a former, um, school committee member, and he's expressed that he has some time to serve, but I think that what we found is a lot of the people who've applied, um, they're coming in, but they need an explanation on what to expect, and I think that overall, um, there's not a written understanding, and there, it's, it's not easy to walk in and understand what's under the purview of the, the long-term
Mm-hmm.
planning committee, which of course is not a long-term committee, it is a temporary committee versus this committee, and so we did have these two individuals who specifically wanted to serve on this committee. Um, the other gentleman that we sat down with wanted to hear about both committees, um, again, we're waiting on him to get back to us, and then several others have indicated that since they didn't get selected for the planning committee, that they would like to be considered for this role, or the two remaining roles, and so.
I noticed that there, from an older list, that there were seventeen people who have applied for the, um, continuing committee, for, I don't, I don't really know how to phrase it. So have you interviewed all those seventeen already? But you're, you're already appointing even though you haven't interviewed them all?
These two individuals had applied at this point, six, six weeks ago.
Okay.
More than that.
This is clearly the committee they wanted to be on, for consolation, um, and so, um, I actually, I think that we were hoping initially that we would have four names to submit all at once, and that way it wasn't, um, that way all four could be onboarded at the same time, and so these two individuals have been patiently waiting, and at this point, it really isn't fair to continue to have them to wait when they both, though they both bring marketing experience, um, they both bring a very different type of marketing experience. Um, Mr. Justin brings, I think, a far more analytical experience, whereas Robin actually is far more adept at community outreach. That's been her background. I think we've seen her on, um, our community television station. Um, both are very passionate about maintaining the facility, um, in whatever way as a community treasure, and so looking to explore as many options as possible to make sure that on the facility is operating on all cylinders, while the long-term planning committee does its job.
Well, the, the list was seventeen for this regular board appointment, that, so I was just curious that, so that, I just thought you might want to interview them all before you appoint, even though I agree with you with the people that you're recommending. They sound pretty good, but I just thought.
Sure, if the committee doesn't care about staying unstaffed for the next three months, I mean, that's not, these, these people interviewed eight weeks ago with us in September. Um, and so we waited and kept them at bay, and they, in fairness to them, have been repeatedly asking about when would they be considered, because both left a positive impression. Um, again, I think my preference would have been to see all four go on at the same time, but to now have these interviews for to put these people aside, these two individuals who really wanted to be on this committee, and there's no reason why they're not capable and skilled. While we interview people who we don't necessarily know have an interest in this committee. Some have expressed an interest.
Well, they, they applied.
Well, even if seventeen did apply with interest, these people, I know, I remember their names coming through and looked at their resumes, actually, myself, because we all get a copy of the resumes.
Right.
And they have been in the queue for a long time, and we've heard, heard repeated, you know, public comments saying, please fill this gaps in this committee, so I, I hear you, and I agree.
Uh, because it almost seems a little unfair to other people that they didn't even, that they weren't even interviewed, but.
They can, those people can be interviewed for the two others.
I need to be really clear. The people that were interviewed asked to be on this committee.
Right.
Those individuals did not apply for this committee.
No, the list, I have the list here.
Those seventeen people applied to be on the long-term planning committee.
No, I looked at it.
There was not a differentiator originally on our, on our online application form. It just said Stevens Estate Committee, and you didn't know which one. So then I think, Laurie, didn't you guys go ask the people which one?
It, it either said long-term, both are current. Those were the choices.
Sorry, yes, I think she put, whenever one of the forms that comes in that you typically see, it gets emailed to all of you, I believe if they sent that in, they were listed as current, or if they said in their other application, they were interested in both, and that's really.
Or just the long-term.
Yeah, I mean, so I, for me, it's, it's confusing.
So these, so you guys know, these two people have specifically asked for this. They didn't want to be considered for the, the thorough.
But so did this, this, so there's others.
So, so let's just clarify, so let me just say this, and I, I think what we've got before us is two very qualified candidates. Um, the subcommittee is continuing to interview members that, that are on this list. I think the logistics of, of interviewing seventeen people for two volunteers is a lot, and they're going to try to get to as many as they can, but there's also some expedience that we're looking at to try to get people on this committee. So although we would probably like to get through everybody, I mean, there's, there's two folks here that have full-time jobs that are working and trying to get these interviews done, as well as all these other people that have full-time jobs, and, you know, they, trying to coordinate all the interviews may take quite a bit of time, so I think if they have to, you know, if some folks, they can't get to them because of the logistics of it, I think finding qualified people that have a passion for doing this is what, you know, we have to do, because again, we've said, we're trying to get this board staff so we can get them up and running again, so they can have meetings and they can move forward. Um, I, but I understand what you're saying, and, and yes, these people have, have submitted, and maybe, you know, as, well, I mean, we, we.
They're wondering why they haven't been called. I, I've heard from a couple, but I think you understand my point. Someone applies, they should be considered.
I understand the point, but. I also understand that, you know, everyone's trying to get to whatever they can get to. It's the holiday season, it's been, you know, there's a lot to get to, um, and they're doing the best they can. Can you think of seventeen people?
And I would simply add that, um, anybody who didn't get appointed to the long-term committee knew that this other committee still had four openings at our last, at our last meeting, so it's, it's public knowledge that there's, that are, that there were four positions, still two here now, so we haven't had people come back to us who've said, was there one?
We did have one individual that emailed us, and we have another individual we sat down with and interviewed, and I would be, if there are people who want to serve on this one, for instance, there was a gentleman we sat with tonight, and this was one of the two options that he was intrigued by, but I actually think it was all more by accident, that he accidentally clicked the Stevens Estate Permanent Committee off and then wanted to learn more because he was sitting there with us, and as you know, from being on the appointments subcommittee, there are people who sit with us because they want to be on the Sustainability Committee, but all of a sudden they start talking to you about the planning board, or the, you know, the zoning board, the people, and so.
They'll list their, their interests, yeah, I understand.
In the case of these two individuals, the, for me, the respect is that these are two folks who expressed an interest back in September, actually, possibly even August was for one of them. We sat down with them.
Yeah, she, one was, Robin was, um, seven nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, so that's one of the names that are, so seven nineteen, Robin applied in July, I think.
And one, and one, and you're right, you're correct. Jerome Justin applied, uh, six thirty. So it's just, I think you understand my point. When, when people apply, they, they just, they'd like to be considered, that's all.
Right, and we, you know, when I was on that subcommittee, I, we had full staff, fully staffed boards, and we, with people that, you know, that there wasn't an opening on the board, and that they would be put on, like, what we're calling the bench at that point, and, you know, to go revisit. Um, but, you know, there's always so many positions, and there's always so much time to interview.
And sometimes people, we put them on waiting lists, you know, if something were to change, then we'd consider them again. I, I understand, I just want to make sure that people feel as though that their application was at least acknowledged and they were considered, but, um.
And we should, I would love to continue to pursue that because there are still two open seats, but for the, the two names that were, that, I, I recognize a lot of the names on that list. I didn't know Mr. Mr. Justin before he sat down. I only knew Robin in passing. I feel very comfortable with both of these people because we interviewed them back to back and just how different the two of them were.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that both could hit the ground running, and, and the case of them, they have the flexibility to continue, or at least initially to have the morning meetings. Um, that's. That's.
That might clear a few people right off the bat if they have to be there at seven thirty.
Well, we, we've actually talked to them about how that's the prerogative of the committee if they wanted to change that time. So that was another, that was part of the impetus for let's put four people on at the same time so that they can just completely reorganize and all be on the same page at once. And I, I don't think that there'll be too much catching up for the two follow-up people, whoever they may be, but.
You have your, you have our commitment. We will continue. I mean, we'll meet back to back. We'll, you know, whatever it takes. When somebody stands up and says, you know, I want to be interviewed, we find a way to do that. So we've got, I think any committee, when you've got two openings, that's, that's a lot of openings. So I'm sure within these candidates and within our town, we'll have some, two other really good folks. And I, I think I'm just really excited to see that there's some momentum, you know, and we're kind of moving first gear to second gear, right? Out of neutral, so.
I mean, you and I both drove here straight from work tonight. And it was meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. And it's been that way for the past four months in a row.
Yeah.
But, but if we appoint these two tonight, at least that gives the board a quorum. And you can start your meeting and then that kind of takes a little pressure off and gives an opportunity to interview some more candidates. But I think this at least gets the board to a halt again, so they can start working and start investing in concerns. So.
Having said that, I would, I agree with you with these two candidates. I, like you said, I've known Robin through the years. She was, also did a lot of reporting and things like that. I think she's a very smart and open-minded person. And this gentleman, his background looked fantastic. So I would move approval of these two candidates with, just making my point of the other candidates, so.
So we have a motion and a second.
I will second. And we should probably note that we were appointing Robin Ellington to the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and Jerome Justin to a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, just because we're filling seats at a different term.
Thank you for the friendly amendment.
Okay, that's a good clarification. Okay, so we have a motion and a second with clarification on the terms. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And with our thanks to both Robin and Jerome for stepping up to, to serve the community. As we've always said, you know, our volunteers are the heart and soul that make this community work. And we saw that especially tonight with our, with our festival committee and what they do for the parade and the Fourth of July and everything. So thank you to all our volunteers. All right, we'll move to licensing.
Move to open a meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first we have a request of Robert Holland of One Fourteen Jewelry and Antiques for a junk dealer's license at twenty-three fifty Turnpike Street. Are you Mr. Holland? Yes, please. Can you give us a brief overview of your business?
Sounds kind of interesting.
I just want to say if Irish Spring is needed, I will participate in that.
He will donate one box.
I'm not a fan of squirrels, sorry. Yes, I'm a, currently, my business at One Fourteen, Coin and Jewelry in Middleton, right over the line. If you travel that road repeatedly, you may see I have a watch battery sign out there, two ninety-nine. I do a lot of watch batteries and other services jewelry-related. This location at twenty-three fifty came up. I'm very excited about it. And we'll be doing, offering pretty much the same services. It's a small business. Jewelry repairs, watch repair, vintage jewelry, antique jewelry. So it's a lot of, a lot of it all adds up to a small business, basically. And I don't know what else to say. If you have any questions?
What's a landmark where you will be?
I'm sorry?
What would be a landmark as to where you would be? Is it one nearby?
Well, you know where Shawna Pond Road is?
Welcome to North Andover side.
Oh.
Yeah.
The Little Sprouts. It's right behind the Little Sprouts, right?
Yes, the Nomad Business Building there on the first floor, left-hand side. It's been vacant for a couple of years. And so.
So at least this way, by you discussing it, people do watch us at home. We don't know why, because we can be a little boring at times. But they really do watch. So now they'll know where you are.
Yeah. And I do, I have many, I do a lot of watch batteries from North Andover, even though I'm over the line of Middleton currently.
But soon flipping to the other side.
Yeah, I, I've, I've been told on, on Facebook and, you know, North Andover Moms, they're, they're sending, everybody's sending them to me.
You get business in the town.
It's great. I must also commend everyone involved. I've been to a lot of cities, town halls. And commended to this one here. Just a great vibe in throughout every department that I've had to, you know, come in contact with.
I'm glad to get that. Thank you.
It's really good. It's very good. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Yeah, that's great.
So you're not really a junk dealer then? I mean, because.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I, well, I buy, you know, I buy, I do buy if someone has broken jewelry, one earring. I buy estate pieces. I do coins, vintage watches or high-end watch.
Do you do any other types of antiques or anything like that?
Uh, smalls.
Small stuff.
Yeah, it'll be small stuff. I'll be very picky with the antique stuff. The reason for that is quite frequently folks come in with stuff. Everyone has stuff. And to have to go to three, four different spots with the stuff that they, they have from wherever it's come from, relatives passed down, all that, you know, kind of thing. So I'm just trying to stay doing my little thing, you know, if that makes any sense. It's getting harder. Small business is getting, is getting tough, tougher out there.
Yeah, I mean, I just had this vision of you taking in like old washing machines and things like that.
No, 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 no.
Me too, until I went to the application.
See, I'm taking antiques and great furniture and stuff, and salvage, ornamental salvage stuff. Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit of, or, you know. Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
And we, like I said, jewelry repair work and watch repair work, appraisals for insurance purposes or otherwise.
That's what I was hoping. Well, appraisals is good.
I'm sorry?
Appraisals is good for people to be able to just run up the road and get their, so they can.
But it's the watch batteries.
It's the watch batteries.
It's the mainstay of the business.
They love it. Yeah.
All right, well, we have, we have approvals or, you know, the okay from the various departments, police department, fire department, building inspector. So long as the fire, the fire department stipulates that exits are not covered, covered with junk, which I clearly don't think it will be if it's jewelry and, and coins. But, um, yeah, so everything looks good for me. Anyone else have any other questions?
Me too. I have approval. Like that stuff.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Good luck.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Have a great holiday, everyone.
Yeah.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Get the hell out of there, Irish Spring. You know where I am.
You're going to have Paul questioning the Irish Spring because he wasn't here for that.
I've heard that before, by the way.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is more of a discussion item. This is something that I noticed and was discussing with Laurie, actually, when we get, grant the different licenses, that our one-day license regulations currently say that it is recommended that an applicant apply for a one-day license for three to four days to allow for delivery, storage and disposal. So they're technically supposed to have a license, not just for the serving of the alcohol, but for the whole time that the alcohol's under their control. So I guess I just want to point that out because we've only been granting literally a one-day license when really it should be, I would say, three in the most cases. One day to receive it, one day to serve it, and one day to get rid of it.
But it is one day to serve it?
But one day to serve it. So I did ask you, Laurie, actually, when we were talking about this, I don't think, I don't know if you responded. Sorry if I missed it. If maybe we could edit the form where, that for the application to get a date that they're planning to serve it. And I don't know, somehow we can either have a start date and an end date to the license and a date that they're going to serve the alcohol in case they need delivery two days before because whatever.
Yeah, we can do that. And then we were also going to just amend the motions so that
Right.
when you approve it, you guys will need to, say what day you're approving the serving for.
Exactly.
I think that's a really.
One-day serving.
Right. So it'll be a one-day serving. So it'll be approving the license for three days with it.
But a one-day serving.
With a one-day serving on X date.
Yep.
So that's what we'll see going forward, as long as everyone's okay with that.
That, that seems to, neatens it up.
Yeah, they clarify it. If it just said three days, that would be confusing.
Yeah, no, we'll definitely clarify. So we did have.
Delivery, service, disposal.
Right, exactly.
Because they would have it in their possession. That's where it gets a little bit awkward. So I think it.
Right. Exactly. And honestly, that's almost when it's more needing to be on a responsibility that you're signing up for. When it's in your possession and you're not serving, when you're serving it, there's the tips bartender and there, there is control. They're watching it.
Right, people there watching.
But when you're storing it.
Why, why did we determine that we need, that they need the license so to just have the alcohol? When it's supposed to be, as written anyways, it's about the sale, not the actual just of having it.
I think it's just the possession you need to show care.
Storage is part of the license.
The storage, the right to store it is part of the license.
So any, anytime that you're in possession of the alcohol is what the license is.
Well, even like you can get arrested for having something in your car if it's open or something in your possession. You might not be drinking it, but.
If, if it's open.
You could, it could be spilling all, well, you get my point.
Yeah, it's, it's possession of the alcohol. It seems to me it's the possession of the alcohol during that, that time period. Not only when you're going to serve it, but when you also have to have it on premises, so to cover your on-premise event.
And what also wouldn't, that they need to be insured too, I mean, I would imagine. Or liability and all of that.
So if someone comes in and let's say alcohol and tobacco inspector comes in to the Stevens Coolidge House and they've got all this alcohol on premise, well, why do they have it there? You know, if they have a license, they have it. If they're not serving until the next day, they have it, you know, ready to go. So.
Is it illegal to have a certain amount of alcohol on premise?
Point six of the regulation, if you scroll down to the attachment, no alcohol may be stored on any unlicensed, unlicensed premise.
It, it just makes sense. It just.
Alcohol shall not be delivered to the premise until the one-day license is operative and shall be removed after the expiration of the license. So I mean, for our, to be in compliant with the policy we currently have, they need to have a license for the full duration. And I think we definitely need to say the date that they're allowed to serve it.
So basically, it's been what we've been doing right along. Basically, it's what we've.
With other communities?
Yes. Well, not all communities.
Acknowledge this.
Yeah, not all communities issue one-day licenses and all communities have the alcohol storage prohibited. And it's kind of unique because it's really only supposed to be for nonprofits. And so it doesn't come up that much, right? But I think that we were having, what I think this came from is that one of our one-day licensees was having an issue because she was trying to take delivery of the alcohol the night before an event and couldn't, right? And was kind of struggling with that. Like, how do I, how do I maneuver this process? And so I think this solves that issue.
I think it's a good catch. I really do. Like, it just really neatens it up.
When you say she couldn't, was it because the vendor wouldn't give them, give it to her or?
No, because of your, because of the policy. She, she was nervous to store.
She couldn't do it and being compliant with the policy.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Okay, so we will start, we're going to change the form to capture all the relevant dates. And then going forward, we'll have that in our, in our reviews of licenses. Okay. Okay. The next item, and this is really for discussion, I mean, so this is revising our one-day license for weddings and church events. So we always waive the police detail, I felt, in every time we're having a request for a license, for a one-day license for a wedding or a church event, we seem to waive the police detail. So right now it says a police detail is required for all one-day licenses except for weddings and church events held during the day. Do we want to, well, first of all, with the Oxford comma, I'm not sure, does that mean all weddings and church events during the day? Or does that mean weddings and church events during the day? So we need to clarify in my mind, because I'm really ridiculous and I want to be clear. Are we saying for all weddings and all church events, both, if they're happening during the day, we will have the police detail? If they happen at night, we want to vote on it? Or all weddings, period? And church events held during the day? What do people think? I, going into this, was feeling that we should say for all weddings and church events, regardless of when they're held, we would waive the police detail. However, we did get some public comment through email, which I will share from an abutter, who says, I will read this from Kelly Cormier. Good evening. I realize the meeting starts shortly. Well, I can skip the intro. If I understand the proposed changes, it removes the need for a police detail if it is for a wedding. If that is the case, I would like you to consider that the safety issues and the neighborhood risk is the same regardless of the type of event. I would ask that you consider another limiter, perhaps weddings not in a residential district or weddings under twenty people could have no detail required. As you know, with the booming event business at Stephen Coolidge Place, this is a growing safety issue. So after reading that, I thought, okay, fine. I, I don't feel the need to change it. We could say wedding and police details. I mean, wedding and church during the day. I mean, I'm fine with us discussing it each time. We can always make a decision on a case-by-case basis. But since it's on the agenda, I'm happy to have a discussion about it.
Didn't Stevens Coolidge Place say they don't have weddings there? They would, they would serve alcohol. They don't have receptions there. So they would never serve alcohol at a, I mean, if, if that's the only example of why we've got the, a potential exception there. Because it's, I, I think she's, Ms. McDonald said that they don't have wedding receptions there. They'll have a ceremony, but they don't have receptions there.
Right. She did say that, but.
Now, our requirement has always been that you need to have that one police, you need to have the police detail for all one-day licenses. And we built in the exceptions. I mean, I think that as a board, we've continued to rely on our public safety departments to give us that type of guidance, you know, and make, I think, an informed decision. Because ultimately, it falls on us anyways, right, as the licensing authority? It sounded like it was coming from there. I was like, oh, D, no, never mind.
I thought I turned it off. My apologies.
And so.
He knows every week I have a meeting.
He's probably watching at home, just being like, yeah, mom. And so I almost wondered, does it just make sense to eliminate the exception piece? Because there were times when there were church events that are happening, larger events are happening on this.
You might want them, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're saying we take away the exception piece and then we just do an event by event at our own discretion?
Well, because we have to do that, we do do that anyways, right? I mean, we have to approve all one-day licenses unless I'm, I mean, I know some communities, it's just sign off. I mean, that's not us. We review everything. And so I would think rather than, if we're going to review it anyways, why not just, we, we have historically waived details in almost every case. Why not just eliminate the except for weddings and church functions held during the day? Because in the event that there is that church function that wants to be held.
Five hundred people.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it, it, rather than set them up for thinking like, oh, we don't have to budget for it. I'd rather groups, I'd rather us deliver good news to groups than disappoint them by saying, you know, gee, we have to give you this, we have to require this detail.
So we would, you would change it to except as may be waived at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen or Licensing Commissioners or whatever.
We could just change that language to say police details, a police detail may be required for a one-day license at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen with input from our public safety departments. Just so that way it alerts the applicant that there's that, there's that possibility, but gives us that flexibility.
I mean, I kind of like at least letting people know that there's some possibility for it to be waived.
Yeah.
What was your intention of, when you, I mean, what, what did you want it to read?
Well, originally, I was thinking it should be for all weddings and church functions and getting rid of held during the day. Because we usually do waive them for wedding and church functions.
Oh, I see. Okay, right.
But, okay, Stephen Coolidge Place doesn't do weddings now, but let's say they decide to. And let's say, whatever. I mean, I, I guess I could see that there could be big event. I don't think usually people, I'm pretty sure we waive all wedding police details. I mean, we, I don't think we've ever had a policeman at a wedding, have we? Since I've been sitting on the board, I was thinking we waive them most of the time. But I guess if it was big enough, maybe we would want to. I don't know. So I'm, I'm rethinking my position since I put it on the agenda.
You know, I like Phil's idea.
I'd like to have this, this discussion.
Yeah.
I like Phil's idea of have, giving us the option because, you know, we also sometimes when they have the WIM events at, at Smolak Farms, you know, there's a, there's a police detail, but he doesn't need them there either. So, you know, we have the option of waiving it not just for weddings and church events, but for other smaller events that may, you know, through our discretion, we know from history that they're not going to be requiring a police detail. Or like at the Merrimack College events, they have their own police details, right? So we don't need to provide an alternative police detail there.
So I think what I'm hearing is we would change it to a police detail is required for all one-day license events except as may be waived by the Board of Selectmen after consultation with the Public Safety Department.
I think so.
So, yeah, is that, okay, so maybe we'll bring that to a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
Thank, thank you again for starting that conversation.
All right, thanks. Just seeking to, just seeking to make some clarifications as I'm understanding all this greater detail. And I love the Oxford commas, so you know, I like to.
You're a streamliner. You're a streamliner. You like to streamline things.
I do, I do. Guilty as charged. Okay.
Adam, chair motion, move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back to our regular agenda, old business. So we put on here a discussion regarding the Stevens Estate liquor license. We've talked about this a couple of times. Last year, well, not last year, this year, previously, we talked about no longer allowing a liquor license for the Stevens Estate in. and then subsequent conversations with the town manager and the fact that we've appointed a, a longer term committee to look at the, um, Stevens Estate. We decided to have another discussion around the liquor license and how we would want to proceed and if there was still an appetite for, um, not approving it or if we wanted to think of, well, maybe, you know, other options. Uh, I probably just hacked that up.
You're fine, no, that's exactly right. So basically, I am requesting that you reconsider your decision not to do a liquor license starting this January. Um, I think that with the appointment of the long-term committee, they have some important work that needs to be done. Um, and I, I know that in fiscal year nineteen, approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of our revenues came from the sale of alcohol. Um, and I think it would have a significant impact on our ability to budget next year if we don't issue the license and have an alternate plan, um, which currently we don't have because they've just begun their work. Um, so what I'm requesting is that we do do the license this year with the caveat that we maintain our current insurance and that it is, um, no cash. So people will have to use their cards at the point of sale, which does solve one of the concerns that we had in the past, which was the, the use of cash. And that is concerning to me as well, as we all know, there, when we have a cash business here in the municipality, it is a huge risk for us. Um, and so we have determined that we could do cards only, um, which I think solves a lot of those concerns. So my request basically is that we be allowed to bring this back for our license, um, for fiscal year twenty or for calendar year twenty, I live in fiscal years, as you can tell, in calendar year twenty, um, and that we reconsider it again as we move forward with the committee.
We talked about this at our strategic plan and I'm glad to hear that, you know, after reviewing it, you agreed that the point of sale of cash is not, not a smart, not, not, not a good move and I'm glad that we're going to keep our insurance. I did have a question about how, so the individuals working in the bar are town employees. And so how does that work where an employee, if they're working, um, they're attending the bar, they're working on tips? Does the town cut them a check? Just, do they fold it into the following paycheck? Because now all tips will be generated essentially via.
Yeah, so that's how it works now, we still, we, in our accounting mechanism, we account for the gratuity. Um, and then they are paid for that gratuity.
All in the lump, so the gratuity gets paid back to the town and then they receive a check?
Anything that's paid for electronically, yes, so.
How does that?
Now, everything will be paid electronically, so that's how it will work.
Okay.
Right, so it's accounted for separately, just like in a restaurant, um, where you have your total business and then the gratuity separately. Um, we have basically an accounting of each event that occurs. We know what the total alcohol sales were at that event and then we know what the gratuity was at that event and we also calculate for the tax, right? Um, and so the tax is paid, uh, the gratuity is separate and then the alcohol.
You know what's good about that? It does kind of give you an idea that everything's being done correctly, that the numbers are correct. There's so many checks and balances with that approach. You know, if the gratuity seems really high and the sales seem low, something.
Right, we'll be able to audit and see, we'll be able to go through the receipts and audit, which we can't really do now.
I think that's, I think we should try it, I think we should go back and try it.
What happens at an, an event where, let's say, the bar is prepaid?
Meaning like an open bar?
Yeah.
Yep, then that's paid for with the card, um, with a credit card and then we don't see that. Uh, there still may, I mean, people may give cash gratuities at those events. Um, but there's no, that I think is a lot less riskier for us because it's not money being paid to the town. Uh, so I'd have less concern with that. But typically, what I have seen, um, for a paid for bar is that the, the bride or groom tips at the end.
And the other thing is, um, the servers will all be tip certified?
Yes, nothing will change, all of our bartenders continue to be tip certified.
Well, with, um, it's a discussion on our agenda, um, does the agenda give us the flexibility to act on that item?
We'll bring the license forward to you as we typically do. I, we were really just trying to understand the sentiment of the board, um, but you'll get, you'll get the license. We've already, I think, done the paperwork, right? Uh, no, not yet, all right, we'll do the paperwork and it will be submitted with the rest of the licenses, so. The insurance is all done, because that actually would have expired already, so we extended it for the time period.
Thank you for diving into this.
I think it's, I think it's, I think we're seeing that it could be very helpful to the sustainability of the state, so.
I will stress, I still think it's the wrong decision to have a liquor license for the estate, but given the fact that we are clearly not going to be able to cover our expenses and have a budget that works, I don't also want to subsidize the estate with taxpayer dollars either, so I will be on board with that for a short duration until we figure out a solution. I just have to go on record of saying I don't think it's the right idea, but I'll be supportive for a year.
Well, I think the other thing is that, that, because we've been asking for a while, how much of the revenue is actually alcohol driven? Uh, been asking that question for two years, maybe?
It's a while, I think.
At least a long time. So it's nice to have that number that you feel and, and we will trust in your, your evaluation that you feel that is an accurate, you know, reflection. And I think to Regina's point, given that that is really part of the foundation, um, I'm in the same place, I don't, I don't see it, we, we have a lot of, a lot of choice to do otherwise, so. But thank you for, for pulling that number together.
Thanks, Lynn, but thank you for your support, I appreciate it.
Great. New business, we have nothing listed under new business. Um, town managers' report, job posting and vacancy log, any updates?
Um, just that we do, we have made an offer and it has been accepted to a town clerk. The board, I'm so excited, no one's more excited than Lori. The board met with her tonight and she will be pending your confirmation at the next meeting and will be starting before the new year, so.
What is, what is this woman's name?
Her name is, should I tell them? Trudy Reed. We're very excited, she's coming to us from Linfield, so. Excellent references, yes.
And when we met with her this evening, it was separately, not all of us together.
Yes, one at a time, yeah.
One at a time.
Yes, she'll be here.
And one of the things that I think was very interesting and very good for, for North Andover and, uh, is that she actually assisted in the training of new town clerks. I can't get much better than that, is to get an instructor, so it's, we're excited, she seems like a great gal.
She's fabulous, we're very excited to welcome her.
And she's the town moderator for the town of Wyndham.
She is a moderator. I did not know that, she didn't tell me that.
Oh, I didn't get that either, yep.
So she's very accustomed and, and used to the town meeting process.
Yeah, they're open, I did ask, they are open town meeting as is, is, is Linfield.
Yeah, I asked her that too, but.
Now, they have forms in those communities and in Wyndham's case, she had to run for that clerk's position too, so.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a really, it's exciting because you, you inherited an organization that was lacking key players in certain spots and I think it's exciting to see the whole team come together and I hope that you're feeling happy as you, as you build that.
Build your team.
Team to drive our community forward.
I think it's exciting because we already have a fabulous team and so when we get to add to it, it's really rewarding.
Continue to build the team, continue to build the team. We've got our Tom Brady over here, so sport preference right there, yeah. Up to bat, right, Tom?
Please, don't even.
Going downhill, yeah. Well, thank you.
Okay, we'll forget that one, strike that one from the record, Paul.
They don't have that column anymore. Who is it? That, say that, you know, I can't believe you said that, remember that column? What was the, that's not the phrase.
In section B of the Sunday paper.
Someone make a, so that you know, Melissa, somebody would make a flub, it's something they'd say and it would end up in the paper. I can't believe you said that, sort of something like that, wasn't it, Paul?
Wow.
Okay, moving along.
Moving along, right.
Anything else under town manager's report?
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, um, we'll go around the table, any selectman updates or comments? Mr. Teckalagero? Anything coming up, anything exciting coming up? Merchants events, uh, anything?
I think we heard about all the exciting things happening already in the next coming, so between now and our next meeting, it's a good thing we met tonight and approved all those festival committee events, otherwise.
Journal Festival.
Yeah. No?
I'll just say that the wreaths are up, um, they should all be up soon. We had a banner, banner year in request for wreaths, so disappointingly, there'll be some people that did not, weren't unable to get a wreath or in the spot that they chose. We were sold out, um, really quick this year, especially for choice locations. So we're sorry that if you didn't get your wreath, but the good news is, there's a lot of spirit behind it, so, um, we, uh, we hope for your patience.
Um, I have something, I have actually been sort of, I guess unofficially, acting as the youth, uh, Youth and Rec Services liaison even before us voting on that tonight. So, um, I just wanted to share that the Joseph and Herman Foundation is doing their annual appeals. If anyone's looking for any, um, places to make donations before the end of the year, uh, they would love your support. A few things that they are planning to buy with the money that they get from the Joseph and Herman Foundation this coming year would be portable AEDs for the summer fun sites, a kitchen stove for the youth center, folding chairs for their programs, a trailer and bike rack for transporting kayaks, canoes and bikes, portable speaker, a partition, basketball rims for Reynolds Playground, portable basketball hoops for summer fun, sand for the outdoor volleyball court, gym floor maintenance, um, and then some additional student program, programming, which they have been working quite extensively actually with a new hire and I apologize if I forget the woman's name, but she's been great, that, um, they hired to do the adventure program and, and ad programming for high school students. There's the selfie project, which is focused on female empowerment, moving forward, a support program for children who have lost loved ones and a videography program to teach students how to film, edit and produce videos, a woodworking program and a geocaching program to give kids an opportunity to get outside. So they've got so many new and fun programs, it's amazing. What I, every time I go to these meetings, I'm absolutely amazed by what the Youth and Rec Services Committee group, you know, the, the youth center does for the youth of Nor, North Andover. It's just so many awesome things and so many new things. There's like constantly adding new things and listening to the input of people and adding diverse options and it's just really impressive, so. If anyone has some extra money to make donations, the Joseph and Herman Foundation would love to have your support.
And I'm assuming all of those are available on the website in this?
All of that is available, yes, on the youth center, uh, website, I'm pretty sure. On Facebook, I know it's on Facebook. I'm sure it's on the youth center page on Facebook and our town website.
Just happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that's a good one.
How about that?
Coming from Turkey Town, happy Thanksgiving.
And just my final was just a reminder, parade this Saturday, eleven thirty, the date eleven thirty, starting at twelve o'clock. Tree lighting on the common on Sunday, twelve one. And then you also have an opportunity to have breakfast with Santa and on twelve fifteen at eight AM to eleven AM at the Masonic Lodge in the old center. So lots of great holiday events coming up, uh, plus the holidays at the Stevens Estate, which we heard about earlier. So lots of opportunities to get out and celebrate this time of year. Okay, anything else? No, good, all right. Our next meeting is, um, Monday, December second, one week from today, so we've got a couple of quick ones. Um, so we'll see you all next Monday and we'll remind you of a lot of these events again. Um, so I'll hear a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.